If everyone would please rise and join me in the flag. I pledge allegiance to the Constitution of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, united in its own right, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you very much. We're missing a couple of board members, hopefully they will make it here shortly. But we only have an hour, so we want them to... Okay. I would like to hear a motion about to approve for amendment 10.
I'm going to approve these.
Okay, any discussion? Hearing that, all those in favor, please signify by the side.
Aye.
Any opposed? We have voted to two to one, Laura. We're two to two to nothing.
Aye. Thanks.
Okay. Are you definitely having public comment in on the process already?
I think we did start at... There's a... We did set up the agenda so we could start with public comments. I might suggest however, that it might be helpful to go through the little short presentation and then do public comments and then do our discussion because then the public would have more comment on.
Okay, okay then. Board members here. Normally we would go and see who signed up, but I think we do the special path because after the presentation that we get, we just kind of do that rather than worry about the listening. Sound okay? Okay then. Number one.
Thank you, Laura. Okay, so the purpose of this study session is to discuss possibilities for the future of the properties known as Mary E. Feller Wetlands and Community Center. We had a board work session last in February and the board charged me with doing some research into possibilities. So I have some ideas to share with you tonight. This is a study session, so I will not be asking the board at any time tonight, the lights are possessed, to be making any decisions. We'll have a discussion, we'll have some opportunity for community comment. Potentially, we would place some decisions or a decision or no decisions on an upcoming board agenda for discussion. So what we have to talk to that night is a potential solution, but one of the things I don't think that we've talked about before, and the more research I did, the more it became clear, part of the situation as over the last two years, we've tried to determine what the future is of the property, has been that we've looked at it as one big piece of property. And the Feller, what we know as the Feller Wetlands and Community Center, is actually three parcels currently of these supporting tax rolls. One of those is the big parcel, that is the 55-plus acres that encompass the wetlands, the sales, and the trail system, and where our classroom and the exhibit center, all the trails of the classroom and exhibit center funded by the RCO grant exist. That's one parcel. Another parcel is approximately five acres near the road that also houses the building that we use currently as a community center that was in its previous life, a part of Belfair Elementary School. And then the third parcel is the piece of the large parking lot piece between us and the Red Barn property that is currently part of the trust holdings. So I think trying to look at all of that at once as one big piece makes it difficult to figure out how do we meet the requirements of the wills of the RCO grants that we have received and meet the needs of our community and our school district and also fit into the description of the school district. So throughout this process, it became very clear that what our solution probably needs to do is be separate solutions.
Can I ask a quick question about the property, the upper parcel which includes the Feller Center building? I think that also includes the play field behind it.
And the play field, yes. It includes the Feller Center building. It's about five acres and includes the play field and there's a play structure there and you know, that's where we've had various events on the play field, like you do the egg drop and things like that. Yes. So we want to look at them as separate things. So we have done some investigation, we've talked to a number of government agencies, we talked with RCO in depth and with legal counsel. And the functions of the wetlands, the trails, that part, that particular property is not really a good match with the needs of a school district or the function of a school district or what a school district can spend the funds that we get from the state legislature to support. So there are a number of government agencies who have shown an interest and continue to have an interest in being the recipient of a transfer of that piece of property. Nobody has committed to date because we haven't asked them to, because the district needs to indicate that it really is going to move in that direction before we can ask someone, are you going to take this or not? But we have a number of people, state agencies, including agencies such as Washington State Parks, DNR, Fish and Wildlife, also the Port of Allen, all of whom are very seriously interested in the possibilities of managing the wetlands and that space for community, for the community. One of the things that has come out, or some of the things that have come up as we've looked at that are, as you know, the wetlands and the trail system have an issue with a dike on one part of the trail system. So we have investigated that over time, you know, two years ago, we've got our first, almost two years ago, we had our first engineering report. We had a secondary engineering report that we received on that that substantiated the different options that we would have under that first report. Our second report that we got recently, since it's been two years later and cost of construction and everything else, the costs were probably a little bit underestimated in that initial report, but any of those options, depending on what the results are as we went through the process for approval, were possibilities. But you know, there is the JARPA process that we have to go through in multiple agencies that should do anything. A question that also came up related to the dike was whether the district has liability in the case of flooding on Roselle Road and that might affect some of those properties along there. Yes, the district, the owner of the dike or the owner of the property does have that liability. Our liability insurance covers that if that were to happen. I've been asked a very specific question and have been assured that that is the case. Our current, our insurance company, changed their name, it's Canfield Clear Risk Solutions. They've changed their name now, it's no longer Canfield, it's an associate. Clear Risk has been very involved in looking at the property with us and the potential, you know, impacts. They have authorized a nominal amount to apply towards repairs if we not meet the needs of any of those repaired proposals that we've looked at, but it would maybe help get some things started and then we could look at going through it and that. So that is something that we can continue to look at. We will be working regardless of whether we continue to own it or remove it on somebody else, we will be working with Canfield Clear Risk Solutions to make sure that there's not eventual danger or impact throughout the community. So that I wanted to be really clear about. So another thing is, well, I think that's enough on that piece for right now. I'm sure there will be more questions and things that we can address. Then we would look at, I'll call it the Mary E. Feller parcel. It is that upper five acres which is clearly more tied to that initial request from Mrs. Feller that then became embedded in the final request from Mr. Feller. And what I can propose is that we look at using that parcel and the school building property on there to meet a very, very serious need that we have in our school district and in our community. That I have had just a preliminary, not an official investigation or anything, but I walked through in detail with Eric, our project manager, to look at how bad a shape is that building really in. And it turns out it's not in as bad a shape as we might think. It has some things that are in pretty bad shape. It needs a new HVAC system. The decorative structures across the front of the building, the pillars, and those need to either be replaced or removed. It needs new lighting in some areas, but not in all. It needs new surfaces and depending on the use, there would be some other plumbing and different kinds of things that might even happen. For example, if this was the use that we went forward with because of the numbers of students that we might house and support, even though currently the Head Start program, for example, does not require a sprinkler system, if we were housing the kinds of kids that we have the potential in providing services for, we would need to include a sprinkler system in the upgrades to the building. So we've looked at all of those things. The cost is not prohibitive. We know that we eventually are anticipating a payout on the trust. That payout would potentially be able to handle all of those costs. But in addition, we have investigated additional partners who would help us make this a reality, who are volunteering to take up some of that cost because they are also people who's supposed to, so I'll talk about that a little bit more. But the reason that I bring that up is we know nationally that students who are in poverty tend to enter kindergarten as much as three years behind academically before they walk in the door. So we would have discrepancies in kids with a developmental age of anywhere two or three to five or six, all trying to access learning together in a kindergarten classroom. So whether you have a kindergarten classroom size of 27 or 17, that's a pretty tall order for the adults and the kids in that room to get everybody where they need to be. We are a high poverty district and so many of those issues that happen for families in poverty that create those deficits in being ready to learn are a reality for our families. So if we're going to be successful in the long run in preparing our students for success in the future as North Mason graduates, we need to start at the very beginning. And that no longer is kindergarten, really, that really does need to be the pre-K program. So creating a Mary E. Feller Early Learning Center could allow us to meet the readiness needs of all students who reside in our district through both special, through a variety of means, through special education, through Head Start, through early Head Start, through birth to three special education programs, and private and public partnerships as well. So one of the things that would be really a huge positive of coming essentially to learning center is we would set that up so it could also be a lab school learning place for our private providers. We would provide training, materials and support so that anyone who goes to preschool within the boundaries of North Mason would have life learning opportunities. So we would help our private providers as well have access to the pre-learning, pre-reading and pre-math curriculum and materials that we would use with kids in the center so that we could ensure that kids come to school ready to learn. There have been, there are a few models of this kind of collaboration around the country. There's one model that I'm aware of in the state that's been very successful, but we would be kind of at the forefront and I think it's the right thing to do for our kids.
Would there be an opportunity for high school students to maybe, the early becoming educators interacting and getting something out of this too?
Well, there really would and there's actually, I'm glad you brought that up because I didn't include it, something to remind me in the slides, but not only would we have opportunities for kids to work with the center and to get that pre-work experience and see if that's really where they want to go, but we would be able, we can also look at building a parent program in a variety of ways. We have teen parents in our district and we are actually very proud of the fact that our teen parents in North Mason tend to be very successful as far as graduating from high school. That isn't the case everywhere, but they could be more successful and more kids could be successful and not be, have their futures cut short by being a parent. One of the things that we could do with Head Start is provide a teen parenting partnership that would include parenting classes. So the kids', the kids' kids could be participants in the program while the kids are at the high school and then the kids could come back or tailor at one of the two high schools and then they could come back and participate in support in the classroom, but also in some parenting classes. There is a model, there is a grant, a state grant to support bringing those programs together, so all of that would be very powerful for us to be able to do. So I included a couple of data points for you. So fewer than half of children in poverty come to school ready to, for school. And depending on what other, besides just being in poverty, what other risk factors that particular family has, homelessness, it could be language barriers, it could be low parents level of education, it could be whether there is smoke from tobacco even in the home, multiple things like that create additional risk factors for being ready to learn. And for kids whose families are at moderate or high income levels, 75% of the kids come ready to learn. So we already have a huge deficit and we're a high poverty community, that should be a good concern for us. So we can't expect our kids to be performing at a high level if we don't do something to help them get there. And preschool programs, in numerous studies, including those from the Brookings Institute in 2012 and the Rand Corporation in 2005, have found that of all of the different kinds of interventions that were investigated, the one that always comes out on top as far as creating that intervention that works is an effective preschool program. So again, just children of poverty, inter-schooling, kindergarteners, particularly in terms of knowledge in reading, reading and math and pro-social skills, and those gaps just get bigger. So I just wanted to kind of point that out with some information. And those gaps then, when you're not feeling confident and you're in a row and you don't have, because you're five or six or seven, so you don't have a lot of other coping skills, having those gaps results in behavior issues that interfere with your learning and potentially the learning of those around you. So the four biggest, in addition to poverty, the four biggest risk factors for student lack of success upon entering school are low education level among the parents, being in a single parent family, that's not to say every single parent's family is at risk, but potentially that is a risk factor. A family that has received welfare and a family that does not speak English at home but is coming into a school system where English is the language of transmission of So our demographics are currently, we have 53.2% pre-1D slush overall, which is our common measure of poverty. At Belfair, it is 55.6 and at Sand Hill, I think it is 66.5. So we have a very high level of poverty in our district currently. Head Start programs that we have are housing, serve 36 kids during the year, which is two sessions of 18, roughly 18 kids each or less, and that is significantly underserving the identified population whom they could serve. That is less than a third of the students who qualify, who are on the waiting list who could receive Head Start services in North Mason. We have early Head Start, we are not actually receiving any early Head Start support in North Mason right now. So Head Start is three to five, early Head Start is birth to three Head Start programs. We don't have any early Head Start available to us right now. Using this space, having more space and creating a unified program would give us the opportunity to provide those birth to three programs for those families who qualify for Head Start as well. And Head Start, for those of you who might not be aware, is a way to provide preschool to families in poverty, families who have those risk factors that we're discussing. We have special education preschool housed at, with classroom space at each building and with total, we're meeting the needs of fewer than 20 kids in those special education preschool classes on average year to year. It depends on who we have each year and who shows up, but roughly that's where we are. And we also have a birth to three program at Holly Ridge, so kids who are served at Holly Ridge are served through home visits and transportation and going to program all the way at Holly Ridge and Breighton. So we could bring that program back home and serve our kids closer to home as well. And then we also have private preschool providers throughout the community who report late listing. And some of them, I know one I have heard recently, the Sherwood preschool, which is now in the Yellow House, the same side of the road as Belfair Elementary, is potentially moving into the big Red Barn building, so they will be able to serve more kids, but we have a lot of kids in our community who don't receive services. And we have a lot of kids in our community who don't have the family income to receive services from private providers, so where they would receive services is in a Head Start program. So the potentials of the program, it allows us to articulate our early learning program with the needs of what they're going to need to know and be able to do when they enter kindergarten. And by creating a center and providing support for anyone who provides preschool services in the community, it enables us to help ensure that all kids have access to preschool program that prepare them to be able to come into school and start learning when they want them to start learning in kindergarten. We would include training, materials and support for private providers to enhance the readiness opportunities for all kids, support, I want to be really clear, we would support but not supplement the plan, the spaces that they have, because we would focus on the kids who've proven the board to go to the private programs. So I think that that's very important and we would also provide curriculum and professional development for those program providers. And then we could expand our program offerings for students at risk, whether it be through poverty, being second language learners, having special education needs identified or not yet identified, we would be able to expand our child line and do a more in-depth and better job with that.
So what you're saying, what you're proposing is that the Feller Center, turn that into a early childhood education center? So thoughts?
So have you already worked or you're planning to work a partnership with the other preschools that work now versus the competition look? Right, we would engage in a partnership. So right now, we have discussed with the ESDs who would be providing the support to us. If this looks like something we're going to move forward with, the next step is to start meeting with the private providers in the community and talking about how this partnership can help them and how it is not our intention to replace any of the services that they provide or take away any business, but to make sure that we're all moving together to get our kids ready. And we would, our service would be for those kids who are Head Start kids who do not, do not have access to private providers because of financial.
Right, I know Christy Brent does, they do, there's a Head Start that comes, a bus that comes for some of the kids, but I know they do like an early preschool and preschool and then, I don't know if it's actually really the program, but they work with the birth to three months and then the three to five.
Oh yeah, all the private providers do. And they do a great job, but they, what is not in place is that articulation with what they're doing and what the outcomes are at the school. The nice thing that we could put in place is we have access to things like the early learning goal assessments that we can share with private providers as well as within our program so that we can kind of see what kids know and what they might need. And then we can share that data which aligns with what the assessments are that they use in the school to make sure that as those kids are coming in, they have now got the information that aligns with the curriculum and the materials at the elementary school from the preschool, so it's a more smooth, even transition for those kinds of kids.
And it'll help their huge readiness.
Yes, it will.
It'll give the kids some confidence. I think that'd be great, because if I didn't speak English and I came here, they'd really not feel that way.
Yeah, it'd be scary.
And the kids disengaging because I don't get it. And they're probably really bright people. Would there be a way to maybe interact with or affiliate with like people coming in checking their vision, their hearing to make sure that if they really can't see, we know that now, we don't make you suffer for a couple of years before you get?
Right, we could include all of those kinds of partnerships. We could talk to the hospital board and get those kinds of support for some of those things. We have examples, we do some things in our district already, for example, the dentists who come in and provide support at the elementary school. We can provide those kinds of things as well and we can be kind of a clearinghouse to make sure that those things are available to all kids who have preschool in our community.
And I'd like to keep the focus on Feller however, and not get too much into the education side. As I understand it, and I'm thinking that we all do, because we've heard some of this before, we're talking about keeping the Feller Center and that five acre upper parcel as something that we would continue to do, what you're proposing. And the large part, the 55 acre piece is something that would then potentially go to another agency. And then what was the third piece?
The third piece is the piece of the parking lot that is currently owned by the trust. And to remind you, the trust has reached the place where they have to dissolve and that process is in process. It's not finished yet, but it is in process. We have been given the understanding that when the division of the proceeds of the remaining assets happens, you know, there are three beneficiaries, the trust, the North Mason School District, and the Boy Scouts and the Girl Scouts, that a portion of our final payment will be that, that parcel of land. And so that when that occurs, then we could determine what needs to happen with that parcel of land. Does it need to go to potentially that other governmental agency so they have access to the road and a way, a way to get in? What do we need to do that? But that probably will happen within the next few to several months, but when you're working through the courts on a system like that, we can't predict that, we have to just wait until the lawyers tell us it's done and ready to go. But at that point, we would have to decide what happens to that piece as well.
Okay, so if we have questions or want to talk further about that overarching thought of how it's going to happen to the property, which we have not decided and we are not going to decide tonight, if you don't have anything else, I want to put it onto the power of the comments, but you also...
Yeah.
So what would, we have a classroom and a museum down there, what would that develop?
The classroom and the museum would be part of that transfer. Those were paid, the building of those was part of that RCO grant. So if we transferred the property, we would transfer the requirements of the grant to the new property owner. We talked with each of those potential new owners about if we had need for the use of the classroom, that we could enter into the classroom, that we could enter into a lease agreement, you know, the classroom for a dollar a year or for, you know, make an agreement for when we might need to use it, that those, that would be part of the transfer discussion.
So if things work out correctly, and again, I'm still in the stage of wanting to understand what this, we have a preschool, we have the three bits of property, we got the preschool program that would make sense from an educational mission standpoint and from a community needs standpoint, actually would put us in a leadership role anyways. Then the fifty-five or so acres, the sense of the managed by another government agency whose business is to manage, you know, such things. And then the two bits of property, if we had need for, if our science program, for example, had need for the classroom, no problem. And all we would have to do is lease it for a nominal cost. And then what, would we just pay for the heating and upkeep or?
If we were the only ones using it, but if we were like sharing it, you know, they're in charge of it, we're using it on occasion, and South Kids App or whoever is using it, then they would just do whatever that, like when people borrow our classrooms now and pay us to use them, it would be that same kind of a situation.
And who bears the liability in the situation?
The owner.
Okay. This is looking rather good to me.
I'm not seeing it on the outside, but I wonder if
I hear it.
Yeah, okay. Okay, so I'd like to open it up for public comments. If anyone has comments, please limit them to three minutes, so that everyone has a chance to talk. And if we have enough time, then you can talk a second time if it comes to that. Does anybody want to say anything about all this that you've heard so far?
Well, this was on a different issue. Just clarifying.
I think that's a great idea. I think you're meeting the will, you know, what the intention of his will back then was, that he wanted it for children. Therefore, I think you are meeting the intentions of the will, so go on.
Other comments? It can be all over the place. You can say, this is a terrible idea, this is a good idea, or you want to take it something else.
Diddle.
And I'll say the same thing. I was at the last school board meeting, and I thought, when you mentioned this idea, I thought, now we're getting somewhere. Now we're going to use it for what it should be used for. And the benefits of children going to preschool is tremendous.
What kind of timeline are you looking at? The reason I'm asking is the formation of new metropolitan park district. In my mind, if Feller is not resolved, the local authority supported in great numbers in our area, that they want this put bid. I mean, there was discussions last year about, let's create a taxing district just to take over Feller and manage.
That is true. The process to surplus and transition this property, because it would be transferred to another governmental agency, is quite streamlined. It requires that we give ten days' notice that the board is going to vote on such a decision. And if it's a sale of property, it's a much longer process. But transfer to another governmental agency requires ten days of notice. And then the board has to vote, and then the agency receiving, and ourselves as the other agency both have to, because there is a grant attached to this, there's a separate piece. So as far as surplusing and transferring it, there's a document we have to have our lawyer draw up that's agreeable to both agencies about the transfer of the property. And then because we're also transferring the grant responsibilities, both our agency and the receiving agency write a letter to RCO saying that we're transferring the property and then when our, and the responsibilities for the grant and the complete transfer is completed once RCO accepts both of those letters.
And the Feller will, I take that this property is part of the Feller will right now, so it's got to get transferred out of there and still meet the obligation of the intended will.
Right.
If it's two years down the road, we could be looking at maybe starting to really take action.
I think, no, I think we could do the transfer in a matter, in a matter of months. We could do the, we could begin the renovations as soon as the board, board decided to go ahead with that part of the process of the building. One of our partners in getting the building ready, of course, is ESD 113. One thing that is just a little side note, we are part of ESD 114 for everything except basically Head Start, because Head Start is a federal program and Head Start is, monies are made available to entities based on the counties that someone's in and you can't be in two and get money. So Mason County is in a Head Start region that is part of ESD 113, which is the Olympic ESD. So in our partnership with them, we have already been talking about either they were going to be at the end of this building that wouldn't be used by us for our archives and storage, or for this end that's going to be for the Boys and Girls Club, they'd be kind of in the middle. So they've already been having to be prepared to remodel and use a new space, because we're currently housing them is going to disappear in a matter of months. So they would just start down there and getting part of the space ready to go, so that they could live in and get that program started in that part of the building this year. So we would have the timeline of the things that we would have to do, we would have to figure that out, we'd have to receive our payout, because we would use money from the trust payout to do the remodeling of the building. So once we received that money, then we could, you know, do the bid process for doing the HVAC and sprinkler system and lighting and new flooring and paint and
And it would still be available for the eight drop and some of the things we traditionally know
Other things, yeah, we could probably do that.
One of the things I've been, people have been questioning, is the field going to be available for
When kids aren't in it.
Public
But not during preschool hours.
Right.
Because that would be
But like on a Saturday
A liability.
Right, but like on a Saturday or anything or in the evening, those are the questions. And no rentals in the building?
Right. But we have huge numbers of rentals in the buildings now with all of our renovations. And one of the benefits of when Boys and Girls Club renovates this building, and they're doing fundraising to do that, is they're going, their plans include putting a commercial kitchen in here. And so when they're not using the building, it would also be something that we could make available for community use.
Now, I'm just to clarify on that community use question, which I think is important. Did you say this wouldn't be, this new renovated building would not be available for community use?
Not when the kids are in there.
No, of course not. Yeah, not that. But, I mean, for example, weddings and things like that, memorial things are sometimes used, you know, that's used for that on weekends.
Yeah, probably it wouldn't, once it's been renovated, that wouldn't make sense anymore. It would be divided into preschool classrooms.
So you'd be having your wedding with ABC on the wall and
Right, and spaces would be divided. So no, the field would work for that. The field would be available, the outdoor space would be available. This space might be available for some of those event kinds of things in the EDS. But no, that would not be available.
So we would really be doubling down on the original educational kid-centered hope? Okay, well, that's very interesting, that's helpful. I suppose our power just goes with our board. I'm very concerned that it maintain the Mary Eve Feller name and that we do something when we get this thing doing. I think that it would be good to have something to really celebrate, you know, what she has seen and her husband have given us as a legacy.
But now the library in Chilton, isn't that three library, because that was the high school, and they turned it, the stairs, I guess, are in front of the same, but we could keep that kind of a theme where it was
The Mary Eve Feller Early Learning Center.
Yeah, that sounds, that sounds very nice. Say, Mary.
Are you going to keep the commercial kitchen in there? And would community groups be able to rent any of those rooms or?
I don't know at this point. We would, because we would be partnering with Head Start, and those rooms would be full of all of those toys and things, I'm not sure. But because there will be a commercial kitchen in here, we might be able to transfer some of those needing kinds of opportunities to this location.
Because I don't have any problem with what you said, you know, just having it be for the little kids.
Good question.
I wasn't clear when you answered about the commercial kitchen, of keeping it down there, I imagine, I mean, the kids
Like, that's great, that's going to be part of our costume.
Oh, okay, yeah. And then what about, so right now, there's people that run the Feller, mainly a person. So what does that mean?
Well, those folks are now, as of a year ago, district employees.
Oh, okay.
Okay, so
Wonderful. I didn't, I wasn't aware.
Do you know, and we have
I did see that word on you, so yeah.
We always have new opportunities for district employees.
Okay, wonderful.
Any thoughts or comments about the other parts of the property?
I think it all makes sense from what you're describing. It all just seems to have the right fit. And I think you're right, buying it by three is, yes, one exact thing has kind of been the key that we haven't hit upon till now.
Yeah, I wish you'd thought of that earlier.
As being the manager, to have another entity to do the wetlands would be tremendous, because they can incorporate so many more programs than having the two employees go bounce back and forth. I mean, example, today, I will shovel and gravel for four hours, so, and then going in and doing programming. So I think it'd be benefit for it to be someone else, to maintain it, do the boards, everything, and it'd be cohesive in that area.
When the proposals are put out, we're going to get to read those, I'm sure. Like, they're going to, what, maybe, are they going to add like maybe what they plan to do or why they think they're the best people? I mean, that's part of a proposal, right? When they put that out?
Oh, you mean, when we
Well, I'm sorry, like, the, at least the four people or four entities that have expressed that they want the wetland
Well, at this point, you know, so what we have to do is determine, we wouldn't have to vote to, you know, make, to surplus that property and then to work with another entity for ownership. So if we were going to put that on the agenda, what I would do now would be to contact each of those groups and say, okay, you know, we're ready for the rubber to hit the road. Where are you? And I would bring to you a recommendation based on the responses that we got and where they are and who's ready or who's not ready to move forward.
So does that mean, I'm just making myself completely clear, so that means we don't get to read all of the proposals or just the recommended proposals?
Well, if we have more than one, when we finally get down to it, then yes, you would get to read all of them. If we get down to only having one, then, you know, one of those agencies is in a funding situation that may or may not, their cycle may not make it be a reality for them to be a part of it. But that's not the case for some of the others, so it just kind of depends.
Okay.
And you could always, on any issue, you can always ask for more information if you're not happy with what you're seeing so far or what you're wanting or whatever the topic is.
Yeah, I'm excited. I'm excited. I love, I love the opportunity that another entity come in for that, for the community concern.
I like keeping the education aspect of the Feller, that's just wonderful, the proposal. The clean first part of it, I couldn't sleep that night, I was so excited.
I would say that parking lot parcel would have to go with the wetlands, otherwise they have no access to parking.
No, that would have to be my, part of my recommendation. I can't see another way, to be fair.
Speaking on the parking lot, you know, that was the third one, and you didn't want to discuss that at this point, but I'm curious about the grant that encumbers that property. Can you explain a little bit about that?
Yeah.
Well, and what happens
The parking lot is not encumbered by a grant.
It's not?
No.
Okay.
The parking lot is part of the
Trust.
Trust, Feller Trust. And the trust right now has valued the parking lot at under $4,000. Our realtors in the room may or may not agree with that.
I'll wait.
Yeah.
No kidding.
The tax value is actually much higher than that, because I have copies of all of those. But what you can tax something, what you can say something is valued at tax-wise and what you could actually sell it for can be very different things. So from the perspective of the managers of the trust at Mellon Bank, New York, that's what the value is. So that will, and the current, current dollar values of all the remaining, other than that, properties are just over $300,000. So when you do all the math, the district would be getting the equivalent of about $240,000, $250,000, including that piece of property that has, with a value of $4,000 as the district's portion, because we're the 80% and then 10% to each of the other two beneficiaries.
Just to be clear, because we don't have a good map that shows exactly the parking lot size, is there going to be any kind of issue where the preschool parents have parked over here and they're taking up space for somewhere over here who wants to use this property and
Are we going to do a separate driveway for that parking lot? Or we still going to have a thoroughfare from the general?
No, I think that might be something that that other entity would want to do, you know, like, for example, right now, where the Wazda is, has created a second opening into the parking lot. Our special driveway, something like that might, or that end there might be where the the other government agency would like to have an access point into the parking lot.
Preschool is pointing, so that might be.
But if you separate the properties illegally, there's no choice.
Right, then that will be, and they will deal with what they need.
Bring up any naked, so I know an alum, when two margaritas is on a Friday night and it's just they'll let the grocery stores and have parking, I mean, so I'm trying to think ahead of how we can make sure everybody gets a fair shake at where they can park.
And then they have the, you can post up that says, for such and such parking only and, yeah.
It's easy to work a blessing to incorporate that in our wording that we're specific as to how it
That's a good point.
This is a point of information. What would happen to our, we view Feller also as a place when it gets cold, homeless people can stay, would that need to be absorbed by the churches or some other group?
Would it live here?
The contract that we have with our grant is that we cannot have it if there's children present. So, and if there's rooms already in a situation like that, the way I have written the grant, it's not accessible. So we could possibly do it here?
We could do it. So we have to think of what we've always used that for, so it's now using this space up here.
And we have to remember, too, that we now have the hub, the center center, so there's other eating spaces and other places for homeless and so forth.
We actually used to do one out at the Fort Lauderdale, years ago, I think the grant has gone away since then, but that used to be a whole shelter. But that's pretty far out there, like I get for this area. I was going to say, oh, open up my building, but not way too far out there.
One's, we must be, we must, when the time comes, we must have key eyes out, so that Art's generous donation of masterpieces is not lost.
Are there any other comments?
Well, the homeless sheltering park could be incorporated into the lower classrooms.
There's all kinds of possibilities.
Yeah, there's all kinds of places.
Okay, then unless there's other discussion, I'm going to be ready to adjourn. Okay, then unless there's other discussion, I'm going to be ready to adjourn this meeting. I need to go back.
Tell me my day off, all right?
If you can adjourn.
And I'll turn around and adjourn. Any other comments? Then thank you all for your participation. And at this point, this study session is now closed.